I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on to item number two. The approval of the agenda and consent agenda items. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move for approval, but move number three down to number five in hopes that we can have our student council representative hopefully here by then.
All right, so we have a second.
Second.
You can have a second for Mrs. Ostendorf. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? The motion carries. Moving to item number three, reports from organization, where that's moving to five, so we're going to have four as three, which is the PAC Employee of the Month presentation.
That was part of the.
Yeah, we did both at the same time.
This time, I'd like to invite Danae to come join me up front for a moment. Danae Heckman is our Employee of the Month. And would like to share a little write-up on Danae. I'm pleased to present Danae Heckman, elementary art teacher, as the November 2024 Employee of the Month. Danae exudes joy in her pursuit of educating students in their visual art competencies, while also consistently supporting their social and emotional development. We are thankful for the consistent energy and positive spirit she demonstrates each day. If you were wondering where Danae is before school, she is hosting an eager group of students who arrive early to assist her in her daily preparations for class. In the middle of the day, she can be seen teaching numerous sections of elementary art classes as they pursue excellence in their knowledge and skills. Throughout the entire day, she goes beyond her regular duties by assisting students and teachers, never missing the opportunity to step up when an extra hand is needed. At the end of the day, she offers countless hugs to students as they purposely stop in her classroom before they leave the building. Danae has set up her classroom environment where students thrive. Two students are chosen in each class session to be her art assistants, sitting proudly in the front of the classroom, demonstrating the packed character traits of responsibility and citizenship as leaders in the greater class community. There is a general hum of enthusiasm and excitement about the projects they get to work on, no matter the grade level. Danae's many art materials are prepared and ready to go before the student center of the room, demonstrating her professionalism and commitment to maximizing each minute of class time. Overall, Danae creates a safe learning environment where students are held to high expectations. Lastly, Danae is a relationship builder. Her authentic smile is contagious, continually affirming students and colleagues. She kneels at the students' level, knows each of them by name, and offers one-on-one attention and individualized support. She views each student as worthy of greatness, even when art is not their favorite subject. Her consistent kindness causes students to feel welcomed, known, and elevated. In summary, Danae is a valued colleague by all who work with her. Her collaborative and positive spirit is a model of what we as PAC employees aspire to. Please join me congratulating Ms. Danae Heckman as our November 2024 Employee of the Month.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Danae.
All right. Moving to item number five, which is now item number four, under PAC Spotlight.
Who couldn't be here tonight? I have been at PAC. This is my eighth year teaching reading intervention.
And I'm Shelby Spohler. This is my first year as a math interventionist. And then the last two years, I taught fourth grade and also my first year at PAC. So in intervention, we like to look at this like tier structure. Tier one is every student is getting the classroom instruction. So the teacher is teaching in the general classroom and they're getting the instruction. Every student is in the room. Tier two is what I'm doing currently. So I'm pulling small groups during win time, which stands for what I need. So nobody is missing out when they are getting polled. This is for, this is for the classroom teacher to provide extra things for students that might be exceeding or also providing things for students that might be struggling in a certain topic. So I'm, I'm kind of just like an extra teacher. So it's just a small group. I pull them. And we work on targeted skills that the teachers recommend. So for example, in fourth grade, they're working on long division. So we're just working on the long division, but also just like practicing multiplication facts and basic division facts. And then tier three is mostly what reading intervention does right now and kind of what we want to move forward with math intervention. And they're really targeting like specific skills that students may have missed throughout their years in elementary school. Is there anything you want to add to that?
The only other thing is, is I was reminded that it's kind of like an ice cream cone. So the first, the first scoop is tier one that everyone gets. Second scoop is tier two. So anyone who's struggling needs to get tier two. And then if they're still struggling and we dive in deeper, they also get tier three. So it's supposed to be a three-scoop tier system. So that's what we're striving for. So for reading intervention, this is how we get the students that we meet with. We begin at the beginning of the year with FastBridge assessments to screen students. We, we find out where the students are at and we meet in meetings to look at that data. Johanna and I, because of how many students there are, and we start from the very bottom and, and go up, meaning the students who are struggling the most. And we take those students. We do diagnostic testing, where we test them with phonemic awareness and phonics. And when we do that, we can pinpoint exactly what types of things they're struggling with. So maybe they, they didn't learn digraphs or they didn't learn long vowels or vowel R or something like that. And then we put them into groups and for those that are similar in their needs. And hope, the groups should be one to three. Sometimes we have four because we always want to meet with as many kids as we can. And so anyway, that's, we diagnose and then we put them into groups. And then we progress monitor in FastBridge. So we do, every other week, we do quick one-minute tests that show their progress. And then at our PLC meetings, which is professional learning community meetings, grade level ones, we go there, we look at data progress monitoring and we sometimes move groups around, reassess student needs and that kind of thing. And we adjust our lessons and groups based on those results. So this year, Johanna and I got a new curriculum, which we really like. It's called Ufly. And it is, it, it is a, it's similar to the curriculums we've had before in that it does dive into what students need specifically. But this curriculum has what they called interleaved practice, which is really good for students who struggle with, with memory and, and keeping short-term memory of, of learning the skills. And so I, I think we're going to get some really good positive results. But the Ufly schedule, there's two days per lesson. So the first day, we have these steps to go through. They get practiced with identifying phonics skills, writing them, blending words, getting the new concept. And day two is reviewing word work. We use magnetic tiles a lot, which they really enjoy, learning irregular words and also practicing reading decodable text. Here's just a couple of examples of FastBridge progress monitoring. I just chose two, two students who are showing really good progress, third graders. We, you know, they, those dotted lines going up, that's supposed to be the projected growth and what we want to, to see. In this case, these two are going above that, which is really good. So this tells us that we keep going with what we're doing because it's working. When we have students who don't follow that line, who are following, falling below or going more parallel, then we have to figure out what needs to change. And so we might do more testing, adjusting the size of the groups, that kind of thing.
So for math, since it's tier two, it's a little bit different. I started the year looking at their FastBridge assessments and then met with the teachers and we pretty much just agreed on the lowest students that didn't already receive special education services. And then, so I just grouped them based on their grade. And there's two groups per grade, about four to five students in each group. And then I based it, if someone was a little bit more advanced in multiplication, say they would be all within the same level as best as I could. And then progress monitor the students as they work. I've had some students leave because they were just way above what the other students were able to do. And then they can, the teachers can add another student in if needed. And then just notifying the parents that they're receiving this service at school. Monitoring is a little bit different for me because I don't have like really anything to refer to except for FastBridge. They only test three times a year. I don't have like a curriculum or a program like reading interventionists do, which is kind of what we've been looking to start implementing, finding a curriculum that could work. But I just kind of monitor how they're doing, for me, how they're doing in the classroom. And sometimes it's based on the skill. Someone might be really good at adding, but then the next unit is measurement and they might be struggling. So just kind of flipping them based on skill. Whereas in reading intervention, it's kind of, once they're in, they're kind of in until they see a lot of progress. So it's a little bit different. These are just some of the things I've done in the, I guess, past a month. I try to keep it super engaging. Nobody wants to come to my room and just do another boring worksheet that they could do in the classroom. So the one on the left, I believe, is what I did with fourth grade when they were doing two-digit by one-digit multiplication. Basically, on the backside, there was the problem and they could show me their work and solve it and then color it. The one on the top was for third grade, working on division fluency, a game that they can do with partner. It's kind of nice when I pull the groups because they get to work with kids that aren't always in like their main classroom, so they can kind of get to see other kids in their grade. The one on the bottom, I did with first grade. So you just flip two cards over, add the cards as they're working on addition. And then multiplication bingo is always a hit, any type of bingo. They can get a little prize if they win. So yeah, just try to keep engaging. Again, it's a little different because I don't have a curriculum, so I'm just kind of pulling materials or activities that I can find based on the skill that the teacher recommends. So. But that's all we have. So is there anything you wanted to add?
No, unless there's questions.
Yeah.
Any questions? I don't think so. Thank you. That's a great presentation.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to point out, Ms. Bueller, at the beginning of the year, when she was hired for our math intervention teacher position, when we talk about team players, we had a last-second resignation from one of our homeroom teachers. And although she was hired for math intervention, she willingly stepped in until we were able to find a, maybe a little cajoling, right? But she, she stepped in and filled the homeroom teacher position until we were able to hire Ms. Lee. And she really helped us fill the gap, so we want to just say thank you for that as well.
Thank you. All right, item five, which was item three, which is the PAC Student Council Representative. We have a representative here at this time, so if they do arrive, we can do that under the board chair report. We'll move it to there. So from there, we'll move to item number six, which is the administrative reports and recommendations. Dr. Flansberg.
Well, I just want to be able to highlight, we did have our annual VOA authorizer site visit in the last month. And it was my first time going through that entire process and kind of learning what, what they're looking for. It's a quite intensive visit. Actually, Ms. Peters and I spent probably a majority of the time with her and literally there's a significant long checklist. And it's going through item by item and making sure that we have full compliance with our authorizer. I think it goes to say that we have a strong relationship with VOA at this time. We want to maintain that strong relationship. They are very happy with the way that we're doing things at this time. I think it's also important to be able to highlight that, recognizing there's local news media outlets that are really focusing on a lot of dissension between some authorizers and their, their school boards. And authorizers providing expectations for different schools and charter schools to be able to change what they're doing. Right now, VOA is very happy with the way that things are going, which is a positive. And we want to be able to maintain that. We passed one policy earlier this evening in the consent agenda. That was a requirement that we needed to be able to have for VOA. And there's just a couple other final documentations that we need to be actually able to get from the Secretary of State, which, once we have, we'll pass that along to VOA and we should be in full compliance and good to go for another year.
Great. All right. Onto the covers of all item A.
That was for, for the, for the report for this time, yes.
Okay, perfect. So on to item B, budget and finance.
This time, we'll invite Bonnie from ABDO Auditors to be able to come forth. And she's going to be providing an update on our audit, our fiscal '24 audit.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. Yes, my name is Bonnie Schwigger. I'm a partner with ABDO and I think I recognize some of you from my presentation in the past. I'm going to run through the results of our audit report. And in your packet, you have a few different things from us linked. And what I'm going to go through is titled "The Audit Presentation", and it has a cover that looks like this. And if anybody in the audience is in the packet, it's this one that I'll be going through and has some charts in it and things like that. So I'm going to start with just a very quick overview of our audit results. So we did issue three different opinion letters over the financial statements. The first one is your independent auditor's report. So as a charter school, you're both a governmental entity and a nonprofit organization. So kind of a unique makeup there. For the governmental part, you are required to have a annual audit completed. Also, your bondholders look for your audit as well. And so we did issue that opinion and did not have any discrepancies within our opinion letter. So clean, clean financial statement audit. We also issue a compliance letter over Minnesota state statutes. So you have to comply with a lot of different state statutes and we didn't find any issues there either. This year, with some of your increased federal funding within your food service program, you were required to have a federal single audit completed as well. So that was a little bit of a new requirement that we went through and, and no issues there. So we didn't find any discrepancies within the food service program that we tested. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the changes. Oh, thank you so much.
Yes.
That's wonderful. Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the changes that we saw within your financial trends. This year was very different, as you know, compared to your last few fiscal years due to your increased enrollment. So if you go down to the next slide here, you can see what your student count, how that changed. I'm going to show you some per-student numbers. And so increased significantly with the, with the base and the increased size of the school. Next is your general fund balances. So your operating budget increased quite a bit, as you know. And if you look at this compared to your reserves, your reserve balances had been around thirty to forty percent in the past. And you did use up some of those reserve balances this year with the expansion. And so your operating reserves went down to about seventeen percent. That's still healthy. It's not, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but just something to be aware of. And if you're adopting a fund balance policy and you have that policy in place, that's really great. Here's an, next is a look at your general fund budget to actual. So you can see what you had budgeted for the year versus where you had ended up. And so you did have quite a few unexpected costs that you didn't originally budget for, eating up some of your reserves, as we saw with the first chart. But your revenues were overbudgeted by about $200,000 as well. And then if we go down to the next slide, you can see what your revenues per student. So, so this is where, if you think about, you know, your increased budget and then also your, your increased student count, it's helpful to look at that. How do we, how do we really compare to last year when we look at it on a per-student number? And so this shows you what you're bringing in from the state, federal, and then also from local sources. Local includes donations, interest earnings, things like that. So you're still fairly comparable to where you were in the last few years. And then this, this is a look at your general fund spending by program next. It's just an interesting chart to see what, what's the portion of our budget that we spend on elementary and secondary education versus special education, things like that. And then next is another look at your per-student numbers. And so thinking again about your increased cost, but what does that really break down to when we have that spread out over all of our students? And again, fairly comparable with where you were in the past. And so you can see there what that looks like for the last four years. And this chart includes data from all of the charter schools in the state that we've mapped out on a percentile range, so you can just see how that compares.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please do.
Just about that graph. What, what is being measured with the 25th to 50th percentile? Percentage of?
Percentage of the, so this is spending per student. And then just the range, is it in the top tier of spending or lower? So just like kind of on an average sliding scale. Yeah, so that's a great question. And then here's another look at your general fund spending. So this one, I, I always find very interesting, especially when there's large shifts in your budget because your, the portion that you're spending on wages and benefits, things like that, that doesn't change. You can see that here. So your budget is still, you know, fifty-eight percent of that is wages. Sixteen percent is, is benefits. Six percent is supplies. And then purchase services includes, you know, any outsourced services that you use. And then next is your food service. And so food service, fairly close to what you had budgeted there. You can see that you did need some support from the general fund, but not as much as you had anticipated. And that's not unusual at all, right? So a food service always needs just a little bit of help from the general fund, transferred in about $66,000. And then next is a look at your spending per student. And so you can see there how much you're spending on food service per student. And we've seen this across charter schools, an increase in spending per student from 2023 to 2024. That's a, a very, across-the-board trend, I would say. And then I have just one slide that looks at your ABCs, so the building company and the bonds that are outstanding there and what those principal and interest requirements look like and how much you have sitting in reserves. There's a really large change in your reserve balances from 23 to 24, the $11 million to the $3 million, because the building project crossed over fiscal years. And so you had funds that you were holding on to for capital costs that were then spent in fiscal year '24. And then we also have a chart that compares your reserve balances to other charter schools. So you can see where your general fund reserves are compared to some of other charter school averages in the state and then also your, the region. Region 11 is the seven-county metro area. And so you can see with that, with that decrease, you did go below, but you were well above where those other schools were. And then I have two more charts to show you, two more percentile charts that just break out some of your larger programs. So the secondary education program is here. You can see what that per-student numbers look like compared to other charter schools. So you're in the lower end. And then we also have one for special education, which tends to be a, a larger program within charter schools as well. And so you can see what that per-student spending looks like. And then on the last side is our contact information. We would love to hear from you at any time. If you have any questions, please feel free to follow up with myself or anybody else on the audit team, if you ever have any concerns or anything you would like to go through. I would love to take any questions right now.
Do we have any questions from the board? Any additional information, Dr. Flansberg? Anything you want to share?
I think the, the highlight that I would like to point out is it was a kundan. And Bonnie helped me with the, the term, meaning that, you know, we didn't have any finances.
Yeah, yeah. So you received, yeah, an unmodified opinion.
Unmodified, thank you.
Yes, and yes.
So an unmodified opinion is the best opinion, the best rating we can get in that audit process. I think one of the things that I know that I've had conversations with many of you on is will the audit find where the over expenditures were? That's not what the audit does. It really just goes to look to say, when, when we were going through our processes, were we compliant with the laws? Were, it was just the overspending, which we don't, you know, that won't find this in specific information. So.
No, right. And, and that happens. And what we focus on for the audit is, we see that, we do analysis on it. Were those things approved, discussed? Were the controls good around spending decisions?
I think that's one of the things that we've made a big shift in, is what are our internal controls to be able to make sure that we are staying within our spending limits as we're looking at making the shift with our controller and our CFO processes. That should also become a little bit more visible and transparent as we move forward as well.
All right. Anybody else? If not, thank you for that presentation.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good rest of your meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So the next items, C, D, and E, those went through our work session. So we don't have anything for that today. So continuing on item six, DAC update, DAC description and membership criteria.
Do we want to invite Jack back up to the table? Just to be able to talk about this a little bit again. I know you, you highlighted this a little bit in the work session, Jack. But again, being able to really speak to the, just what we're asking the board to make a shift on.
Yeah. So I think you, we just need permission, or have you guys changed the language that clarifies that the chairs can, or the co-chairs? I guess you guys need to decide if you want them to have voting rights. That's the first thing.
Again, just as a reminder, for those who might be watching the conversation, Casey Peters used to be the, the chair and with her resignation, we did not fill her position. Administration picked up portions of that position for this current year. And currently, Laura, Dr. Laura Bronson and Dr. Sean Losi are assisting with the co-chair duties. And with the description, they do not have voting rights. The question would be, do we want to allow them to have voting rights? Casey did previously. And it would be allowing them to have those voting rights until we fill Casey's positions for next school year. And so it would be needed, we would need to readjust this again next year anyway. So it would be through the end of this school year. Unless you chose to keep them on as voting members, just in general, as non, as ex officio members.
I don't see an action item on this. Is this something we're deciding today?
It would be the request to, it, it could be. It could also wait until January.
Yeah, because we're not meeting in December.
So it could be something that if you wanted to, be able to think about it and bring it back.
I would like, I'm sorry. I'd like, what is concerned about the makeup on DAC regarding replacing one's administrative voting rights, which was Casey as a curriculum coordinator, now with two administrators? Two voting, and both have voting rights. That's kind of, and I mean, I want to make sure that parents also still have the ability to have a say as opposed to just an administrative, you know, two against one now, or two versus one or before it was just one administrator. So I'd like, I don't want to make this decision tonight personally. I would like to see how the makeup of the, of the committee is in order for me to make a decision, making, to ensuring that parents still have the, the power.
We do.
Huh?
We do. There's six parents currently serving on DAC and two staff members. So the community seat and student.
Would that, so you say two staff members? Obviously, we have one teacher.
Yeah, well, it's Mrs. Canfield and Carrie Ullman. Yeah, well, it's Mrs. Canfield and Carrie Ullman are our two staff members. And then so with Dr. Bronson and Dr. Losi, that would be a total of four staff and then six parents. So parents still would have the majority on DAC.
I'm okay waiting until next, next month that there's not a DAC meeting, we can put it on the the working session. Yeah, I I think it's gonna be great, but just, we'll just, uh, we have consensus to table it until.
Well, is there even need to table, because there's an unaction item.
Well, I guess consensus to bring it back or it's just some discussion right now.
Do I need to resubmit it for the January board meeting then, or will that just get bumped?
I can put it on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the one thing I did notice under committee duties and responsibilities is it still mentions we handle the climate survey. And I believe that was taken off of our responsibilities. So I don't know if you also want to add in language about working with, um, the principals on development for academic.
I wonder, Jack, if it would be helpful if you and I sat and just gave a rough draft for, with edits for the board to be able to then review prior to the next session.
Yep.
Fantastic idea.
We'll clean it up for you.
All right. Sweet, thank you.
Yep.
Once again, thanks for doing that.
Thanks for the sandwiches.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, and then on to secondary enrollment, section size, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five discussion.
I'm gonna invite Ms. Hammernick to come join us. Uh, Dr. Losi was unable to be here this evening, so Ms. Hammernick is going to assist in the conversation. Uh, if you recall, last month, we were beginning conversation about, uh, section sizes and total enrollment to make sure that as we we look at our secondary building in particular, that we are making sure that all student bodies fit. We have a place for them and classrooms for them. And after conversations with, uh, Ms. Hammernick, Dr. Losi, Mr. Bjork, uh, they started to look at, uh, the schedule. They started to look at all of the classrooms. And, uh, I'm going to pass it over as soon as she hands out kind of just a little information enrollment recommendation. There, this would not be an action item because the, uh, as we walk through and talk about enrollment projections, everything will fall within board-proved ranges. But as we look at expansion, uh, what the plan was and where we would like to be able to stay for next year. I think that's the conversation that we'd like to be able to share.
Correct.
All right.
So looking at the recommendations, um, on that first, um, column that you see where it is current. So the current, um, is like, if you look at sixth grade is currently at one sixteen, that's where we are. We have the ability to go up to one twenty if, um, if the families on the waiting list do accept for second semester, et cetera. So there are some little bit of differences, but the sixth grade for this year was to be at one twenty and is expected. And that's the, um, recommendation is to keep that at one twenty for next year. That does put thirty students in each of the four sixth grade sections. Um, seventh and eighth grade then at one twenty-two, ninth and tenth grade at one twenty-eight. Eleventh grade would be tw- um, one twenty, which is the tenth grade moving up and just, um, adding six more to that section. And then not adding additional twelfth graders, um, other than for semester two this year. Because they would move, um, move on up to the, the ele- this year's eleventh grade, obviously moving up into the twelfth grade. So a little bit in the rationale in that is really looking at before we add to what we were currently looking at is really see how this feels with the population as it continues to move forward. Because right now, as you can see, the eleventh and twelfth graders, or the eleventh and twelfth grades are at that sixty-eight and fifty-seven. So moving the eleventh grade up to a hundred and twenty, that is fifty more students already right there. Adding and getting our tenth grade up to that hundred and twenty-eight. Um, and then with with those shifts, we're looking at about seventy-six students right there. We really feel it's important to continue to focus on the student experience and also be aware of budgeting and hiring. The needs regardless, um, next year under this recommendation, either way, we need to add a science teacher for next year because of the earth science licensure. So that's a licensure and we're we're at that point. Um, with the recommendation that we probably, we will need to add some time in for ELA, social studies and math teachers. There is some option to be able to, um, do some of that in-house with different licensures that we already have with even some of our specials, that's not all worked out yet, that's, those are just options to look at. Another thing we need to look at is needing at least a part-time additional, um, ELL teacher to be able to serve our students at the secondary level. Our current EL teacher, she is very, she has a very large load and not able to really serve enough. Um, at the, especially when we get to that secondary level and needing to get, get our students ready to be able to be proficient, to be able to be ready for graduation. Um, so the seventh and eighth grade, we can get by with a hundred and twenty-two because of the structure of the middle school schedule. With the four, they have the four cores and then they have PE and arts. Some core classes might be at thirty-one or thirty-two under that. Ninth grade could go to the hundred and twenty-eight, that would give social studies and science class sizes of thirty-two. English and math is a little lower due to our special ed students having other, um, pull-out classes. Tenth grade, again, a hundred and twenty-eight, similar situation, but in tenth grade, they tend to also, um, mo- navigate into different, different sections. Uh, and then we talked about that eleventh grade then could go up to that hundred and twenty. Our senior class next year will be seventy. The classes they'll need will be econ and government, and we will need to offer a third section of world history. The primary stressor then, of course, for the upper classes are electives, as those class sizes will increase. And that is the primary, primarily what those students need at this point. Another consideration about adding seniors is, of course, our graduation rate. Students that tend to switch schools their senior year often have credit deficient deficiencies. And that does affect our graduation rate. So that's one of those things to really think about as we look at adding seniors in, um, after that junior year. As we look at the challenges for long-term growth, um, I'm gonna just talk about the physical building. Classrooms, right now with the current, um, recommendation, we can, we do have enough classrooms to, you meet it. Um, beyond that, we will be at capacity and we'll have to get very creative because every single classroom would be used at that point. And then it would be having to share classrooms and rotate in and out with preps. The lunchroom is a, is a physical challenge. Uh, sixth grade lunch side, slides would remain the same. Uh, the seventh and eighth grade lunch sizes will largely remain the same. Um, for the next year, ninth and twelfth grid lunch periods will get much larger, um, if we remain with the four lunch periods. We would have to think of a way to mitigate that lunch bottom, like, we really do, that's, takes creativity. Um, bathrooms, it's already a challenge, the number of bathrooms for the number of students we have and being able to get in and out of them in passing time. Uh, lockers, we do have, um, a sufficient amount. The auditorium, we can fit seventh and eighth grade together. We can, will not, no longer be able to fit a nine through twelve assembly. Storage spaces, of course, and items, uh, for classrooms now. Staffing, uh, we talked about the, already the needs for the twenty-five, twenty-six years. Additional case manager, tech support, because that's additional students and everything that goes with that. Building in tech integration, um, and we already talked about, um, ELL teacher. And then supports or support services, being able to, um, staff a resource room for our students, adding busing. And then, um, continuing to add college in the schools. That's a lot of information. What questions can I help answer? As we've been thinking through this quite a lot.
Sounds like we'll have enough, uh, classrooms for twenty-five, twenty-five.
Yes.
Two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
Yes.
Two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, the seventh, or the eleventh graders move up.
Mm-hmm.
How about that?
Not sure, probably not.
Okay.
As, as we're looking at it, yes, not, not in being able to have every person have their own classroom. We will ha- by then actually have to start doing some sharing of classrooms.
Okay.
I think as we were having conversations, I think our goal is to allow current bodies within the system to essentially roll up with minimum additions to fill in some of those open seats that we currently have for second semester. And then as we look at filling those sections out for second semester, kind of keeping it right there.
Yes.
And the numbers that we looked at for the one twenty-two and the one twenty-eight, uh, Mr. Bjork, I think it's indicated that those were appropriate numbers because we lose a lot of kids, we, the idea of front molding ninth and tenth grade.
Yes.
Because you lose a lot of students in the junior and senior year for PSEO classes. And it's harder to fill them in the eleventh and twelfth grades versus the ninth and the tenth. So looking at the the rationale for that one twenty-eight, and I do recall, and I I look over to Christine, because I, again, sometimes I get caught up in this one number of one thirty-eight that always sticks in my head. And and there was a number I had seen at one point, we do not want to, and and are not recommending going and pushing more kids in. We really want to slow roll where we are right now and keep the the focus on the student experience and really see what next year feels like as we allow these larger grades to move upwards and fill those seats. Because if you look at the the total number for enrollment, by just doing the minimum right now, we are, we will have projected eighty-one more students at the secondary next year with very minimal adds.
Some of them starting second semester this year, however, from right now to next year, exactly is eighty-one.
When we do our, uh, our budget and we look at our revenue based on our student count, do we use projected student count then, as we, we know that some are gonna go to PSEO, we're gonna lose funding? Do we look at the, just the number?
So when, when they, when you build your budget, everything is based on student count. So you do factor in PSEO, you should be factoring that in and subtracting that as part of your planning. On the front end, you look at your kind of year-over-year averages, you can never get it exact because there's always a little bit of fluctuation, some kids start, they don't finish, they, you know, begin late. Uh, but if you have kind of a, a running average, you know, three, four, five-year average that you're able to look back and say historically, where we get a little bit more nuanced is, uh, I think Mr. Tassi earlier described, you know, our junior class is kind of the last of the original small groups. And as those larger groups come up, that's going to provide us new information and new baseline data that we don't have past history to be able to look back and make some informed decisions based on those new numbers. So I think we, we will have to do a little bit of an educated guess, uh, with some of that information. And at the same time, as we budget everything out, the student number, this will one hundred percent impact the projected budget for fiscal year twenty-six.
So if, if I look at the timeline correctly, by the time we get to the next school year out, the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, we should probably be thinking about what the needs are for the school when we refinance at that point. I mean, that, it takes two to three years to get that down. So you'd be planning two to three years, three years really, because this really took four.
Yep.
So expansion, so maybe you don't need a year, but you'd be actually looking at the plan starting for that seven-year refinance and then filling those, being able to fill the needs of the school, expanding the wings, probably the auditorium, you know, some other, you know, putting all those things together is gonna be important to start planning.
And I, and I think there's been some initial observations and conversations, uh, from the secondary administrative team on things that they're noticing and kind of some hope for's. Uh, the cafeteria is very tight when we think about our, our secondary lunch experience. Um, the auditorium is very tight. You know, right now choir, you know, has their class on the auditorium stage. You know, we, we have some things that we will need to look at for not only just expansion, some of those larger spaces, but also looking at rooms to be able to maximize. It's also not uncommon, I, I can remember being a young teacher and I used, I was the teacher on a cart and I had to disrupt everybody's prep room moving in. Uh, there's a lot of places, if, if schools had a bullpen, uh, to be able to describe it in such a way that teachers have an actual office space. Um, I think back when I went to high school, departments had actual office spaces, the cubicle rooms that they would share their desk spaces, uh, and would go to the classes that they taught. And they didn't have a, I, this is more as my standalone room, a little different than elementary. The high school I just left had that same exact configuration. So it's not unheard of, uh, best, the best teacher experience is everybody gets their own room and doesn't have to move. That's the best teacher experience. Uh, you know, and that would be something we would want to be looking at as well when you're talking about expansion like Mr. Lawrence indicated.
And you have to look at enhancements at the elementary school too.
We have a significant amount, we have a roof that will need to be replaced, uh, in the next two to five years. We have.
HVAC.
Uh, HVAC systems, our water pumps, we have forty pump, water pumps, and all of them are slowly nearing end of life. Uh, so we need to be considering all of those things. So it's not just the secondary expansion, it's also the, the normal, regular upkeep of our elementary campus as well as we think about that future refinance.
I don't think there's any room, there is a little room left at the elementary campus to add.
I, well, to add?
You could add, oh, the one area.
Yeah, to, I, I would say the elementary as it currently stands is beyond capacity. They're out of rooms and I, I think you're looking for spaces right now constantly. I'm looking over at Dr. Bronson who's nodding her head yes. And I think Ms. Ostendorf would probably be able to, to speak to that as well. But we, our elementary is tight, very, very tight right now. So even though we have this brand-new building, we've expanded, uh, we're, we're filling up our seats pretty darn quick.
I'd like to just point out that I think it's important to consider that part of student experience is teacher experience. Um, so I, I do see the model similar to, like, undergrad professors having offices and then going to classrooms and having to just be a rotating classroom. So that model coming down into the, into the sec- into the secondary building, I unders- I understand it. But also, we don't want to be, I don't know if we want to be, we want to be a high school, I think. And for those kiddos that want to have some college courses, maybe we can utilize those rooms for CIS and it looks more like a rotation schedule. But have, is there a possibility to consider, I'm just thinking creatively, with the lunchroom? Can upperclassmen have open campus where they can be off-campus or in a different space? Or, you know, they have to keep a certain GPA to have those.
Privileges.
Privileges, um.
We had it.
We turn this into a college and, like, I'm just thinking.
College and career center?
Yeah, where those kids that are doing CIS or PSEO, they have a separate space and that maybe takes some pressure off the cafeteria. Um, I don't know, it's, it's tough. I, I'm really unsure about teachers moving from class to class. And I, I know we're student-centered, but so much of the student experience is based on teacher experience.
Oh, and I think it's important to point out, I think for next year, we're in good shape as well. And I think it's, we want to really limit our roll-up as we're talking about our goal is not to add more because we need to see how that feels next year before we can really start making some long-term projections. I think our goal is, let's only keep the minimum that we're, that we would be adding and the current roll-up and see how that actually feels so we can be responsive.
But it's two more kids per class too next year, right?
No.
No?
Well, I, I have to defer back to Ms. Hammernick to be able to, because I know that as the secondary team, they met with Mr. Bjork to be able to look at the numbers to come up with those. So some classes, and we have some that, when we base on an average staffing ratio of a thirty to one, some classes, some can go above that, some classes can go below that depending upon what the needs of the class are, enrollments, electives. The elective schedule is determining a lot of things at times. Core is where you run into some issues with a couple of classes.
Mr. Tassi, you had your hand up.
Jennifer, uh, you might be familiar with the program at Spectrum, the perks program, something along the line.
Correct.
Can, can you just maybe, I, I'm not just, I've heard about it, I don't know a lot about it.
The, um, perks program is. The, um, perks program is perks being, being able to come and go from campus. Similar to what we do for our P S E O students, but it's actually for the students who are doing the college and the schools, um, cla- classes on campus. So if they don't have a, um, if they have a, a study hall that hour, they actually have release time so that they can cut, they are able to come and go. And it is exactly that, it is based on grades, um, and great, it's a weekly grade check. It is a, um, it's also behavioral and attendance related. So they have to be, have all of those things in place for them to be able to have the perk of being able to go home or go, go study at Caribou for the hour if they want to instead of being in a, in a supervised study hall.
Their schedule is much different to the block schedule.
Yes, cor- correct, where it's not forty or fifty minutes to come and go, it is an eighty-five minutes.
Sorry.
No, you're, sorry.
I'm just thinking a lot, if we adjust the schedule, could that affect?
It affects lots of things.
Is how does block scheduling impact, right, room space, does that, does that help us at all?
It really has to be looked at.
Yeah.
That's the, that's a much bigger question that you really have to, you can guess, but you don't know until you really try and take a run at it. Which I.
Yeah. Other questions? What are, uh, next steps with this, like, now that, now that we have this information, what are we gonna do with it?
So I think for us, we're at, we're, we're planning to begin adding our students for those who, to fill those sections for their current second semester and beginning making calls next week. And actually it's, you know, um, as we learned from Bridget Peterson, A D M, the, the, you know, there's been conflicting information, sometimes people believe that it's that October first count and then that dictates everything and it really is the A D M. So for families who wanna start earlier, we're going to allow that conversation to be able to say you don't have to wait till the semester, cause that brings in, you know, when you lose a student, we need to be able to fill that spot. Cause that keeps the cash flow going for that student and that student spot as we learned at our board training.
Yep.
Um, so, so that's the plan. We are not going to be, we're, again, our goal is not to add more kids. We really wanna be able to keep it as minimum as possible for the roll-up as is. And again, by doing almost the bare minimum, we're gonna see upwards of eighty-one new students going into next year at the secondary, just with that, that buildup of students moving upwards.
And then fifty the year after.
Yeah, and so.
But the fifty the year after, we don't have room for, am I misunderstanding that?
No, we, we would have room, I think, that's where the conversation about the creative classroom placement. So that's what we need to be able to look at and thus the reason why schedule conversation for next year needs to be a priority conversation to be able to look at and say, if we changed or modified scheduling, what does that do for us for classroom spaces, for where students are? How, how can we get creative possibly with the schedule? I think that's what needs to be explored to really see that impact. So that's the to be determined for the following year, but that's, I, I think that really is the work of next year where we need staff, we need to be able to really dig into that question. Yeah, so the space is here, the problem is how it will be used is not as it is used now, nor would it be how it would be used next year, which is why we wanna explore other options and why we need to, as Mr. Lawrence said, start thinking about what does the possible future look like if we were needing to create some expansion classrooms, cause there are wings that are ready to go. But then what are the costs? We have a lot of other things to be able to get through first before we can get to that point. But we also need to do that concurrently and plan for when we reach that point, what will that look like? And at the same time, looking at our elementary, um, costs that are going to be needing there because we've got floors that are ten years beyond their life with some of the tiles that need to be replaced and upgraded there. So I mean, we've got a lot of, we, we've done a nice job keeping things as long as we can and there is a point when it, it just needs to be replaced.
Mr. Lawrence?
And I, I wouldn't suggest, you know, adding on to the school just to continue to expand. I think any next construction would be, where do we find a stable number of students and that we can handle? And then accommodate that and then kind of just, that's the campus, that's it. Any other, you know, expansion of the school would be another campus somewhere. Um, but I think for this, you know, in, in this picture, you just look at, okay, where is stability? And then how do we accommodate those students? And then, cause we know we're gonna have to refinance in seven years, so, you know, might as well plan for some upgrades.
Um, bathrooms is an issue, it sounds like, so do we know, do we have a tech plan for that?
Well, we just, we learned that some of the bathrooms have been getting locked. Uh, the large, um, used bathrooms across from the gymnasium, those are now unlocked and available for use throughout the entire course of the day.
That seems to be helping, yeah, especially in the B wing.
So.
Well, we're having issues with, hell, we're having waiting use, like, issues happening in those bathrooms.
In the single-use, I believe.
Yeah, is that what we're talking about?
No, it's the, the large-use gang ba- gang use bathrooms here.
The event, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like that.
Take away run problem, give another.
Um, I would echo Mrs. Ostendorf's, uh, sentiment, I think we wanna avoid the hotel suite sort of classrooms as much as possible, it's the, the teacher experience as well, but part of the two, student experience is going to Mr. Tassi's room and seeing, you know, George Washington on the lawn, I think it's.
Ronald Reagan.
Ronald Reagan, uh, do you have Ronald Reagan?
Yes.
They did, uh.
Yeah, uh, you know, I think that's important when teachers.
Murray Ambrose Brunstein will be here next week.
He's going up, okay. But, but when the teachers have ownership over the room and they invest into their room, I think, I think that's important for the student experience. You have a, a sterile environment sometimes when you share, so I think, um, that'd be a priority of mine as well. Be as creative as possible to avoid that.
You know, I feel, I think it was touched on, man, maybe it was during the retreat. Um, oh, and, uh, Dr. Losi had mentioned, um, uh, the, the idea of, of these shorts, these short classrooms, right? Forty-nine minutes is, is not adequate. Uh, it does feel oftentimes like, uh, almost a factory line type of teaching. And I think it's a factory line learning and it really, it really does prevent getting deeper into the content that I'm sure every teacher would love to get into. Um, the idea of a very, very quick passing times, uh, the B wing is incredibly crowded with, when you have kids at the lockers, plus the doors open in the classrooms and it's, 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 it, it does not leave for a lot of time for kids if they have questions, because you funnel in and out. Like, you know, today I was working with a kid after class and, and of course I, you know, had the next class coming in. So it does feel sometimes like we're not getting that, if we're really concerned about the student experience, uh, that, to Anne's point, it is also the teacher's experience and the idea, the ability to sit there and stay afterwards and discuss what we just discussed, like, we're talking about the first Minnesota and, and Gettysburg today and those type of things. And it's very important these kids understand, know that you can have that extra time. But then with four minutes, really three and a half, if you really quite think about it, to get from a classroom and if you're going from all the way over from English all the way over to science, it's not really in locker room. You don't really have that time maybe to get with the teacher to, to get a little more depth and, and profound learning. So I think looking at all, a schedule change in the future, however that may work, and, and whether we go to trimesters and we do block scheduling or however, just for the students' sake. And I think maybe that could help alleviate something, Anne mentioned C I S, C I, you know, in that particular, maybe C I S could get out of the classroom and go to a different classroom, cause you're teaching on the college level and you don't really need everything that you necessarily have to have in your own classroom. So I think there, I think this is workable. I mean, I, I think we just, it was more, we need to be creative and, and, and admin, and admin seems like they, they at least understand, um, you know, all these things and, and what really is at stake for the student. I think, uh, I think we could be creative and maybe have less impact on the teachers and at the end of the day, the students. Um, and then to Brad's point, I, I'm glad he's already thinking about expansion, uh, more expansion. I heard he's the one donating the money to do that, so that's pretty good, Brad. Uh, I do appreciate all, everything you've done for the school. And Jason will do the tiling, um, I'm pretty sure, so we're, we're set.
We're covered.
Yeah, we're set.
Kind of be a block afterwards, I'm pretty sure. Are you gonna do the lunch thing? Just all meat?
Please, let me add the lunch money, but.
Cardboard.
Meat's back on the menu, guys.
I worry these kids.
Nothing but steak.
No more red dye, forty, I'm promising.
Yeah, just steak and eggs every meal.
Steak and egg.
We're fixing all the problems, this is good.
You have a bun once a month.
Well, I mean, just one, one.
Yes.
To go back to the history of PACT and with all the spaces that they moved through.
Yes.
Um, I mean, there, there could be, you could lease a warehouse space and have fifth and sixth grade in their own unit near the elementary campus, like they do at District eleven, they have sixth grade on its own. Um, I mean, there's like all options to, and that wouldn't be to the building because you'd be leasing the space. Obviously there's costs with the build-out and whatnot, but it would be far less than building a new structure.
Yes, uh, Dr.
You, you go first, I, I had a, I had an idea, but. No, and, and when you, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Lawrence, you bringing that up because actually with the cost of many businesses doing work from home, the commercial real estate market is dramatically different, uh, than where it was. I mean, it's, it's definitely cheaper to purchase something that's been built and refig- configure it in many cases than it is to go build. Um, the cost of building, as you all know, is quite exceptionally expensive. And so there could be other options that we could look at that direction in the future as well.
That's two years down the road, but if you're looking, you might find, if you're planning and looking, then you're not, you're ready when it presents itself.
Well, and then to, I, I don't know, have we talked to St. Catherine Drexel about, I don't know if there's any, gonna be any availability to maybe lease a couple of rooms from that, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to think outside the, the box, we did that one.
It's a pre-K program.
What's that?
That's pre-K program.
No, that's, that, pre-K does need to be a conversation at some point.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm trying to tackle the, the problems that are right in front of us, I don't, I don't wanna get into another problem.
Kind of food your rooms, doesn't it?
Yeah, you did, you did, let's not blow.
It's down the road.
It's down the road.
Mr. Tassi.
It's on the football field, no, um, I, I, we talked about it for the retreat too, the possibility of online. And, 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 and that alleviating maybe some of those issues, or it could, or, you know, additional revenue, those are, those are always some options that we have a year or two to, to, you know, that we could maybe start thinking about. So that, that, those are some ideas as well, I, I think this is very doable. Um, I don't think we need to get too, too worried about it and, you know, and if, if, even if a teacher does have to occasionally get on the cart and, and go, that, as long, you know, as long as they still have a home base, I think it does make, but if I'm teaching C I S and I have to go to different classrooms, so be it, I, I, you know, that's what I have to do and it's for the students. Um, so I, I think, you know, as long as it's, it's, it's not running around living out of a cart, right? And which we did during COVID, which was awful, right? That was not fun teaching when we had to do that and the students really suffered with that as well.
Yeah. Yes. I, I think at the end of the day, what I wanna really reiterate is we wanna do the slow roll add, which is what we're talking about here. So when we're looking at this for next year, I just want everyone to be aware that administratively, we're very aware of what this impact could look like and we want to be able to see student bodies in the building, experience it before we say, hey, let's just increase our senior class all the way to full next year. Like, that's not what we're saying. And that's why we wanna be able to take it slow over the next two years. We've had a significant amount of increase, we all know that. Um, when, when Bonnie was showing in the audit our enrollment numbers from just three years ago, it was, uh, you know, well under seven hundred, it was in the six, maybe six sixty, six seventy. You know, and being able to see those numbers for our average daily membership and where we are today at about fourteen hundred, it's been a big shift and I wanna credit the teachers and the administration, uh, who are working their tails off to be able to help establish the culture and climate for what it means to be a PACT student. That doesn't happen easily and I think what we're saying is we've had a lot of add. We have an opportunity to feel like we can slow that add down just a little bit and, and really get to that point where it feels more comfortable. But also recognizing even that slow add is going to have an impact on the secondary campus because we're adding about eighty more students next year just as part of its natural progression.
Perfect.
Yep.
It's a good, good summary, unless anybody has anything else.
Good discussion, thank you.
Yes, thank you for, for presenting that.
Absolutely.
All right, on to item seven, board chair report, uh, Dr. Flambberg, kinda stole my thunder and the word succession, but for Greg, who wasn't there. Uh, just wanted to highlight, we had the PACT choir, uh, they were able to attend the Ramsey tree lighting. Um, it was a huge hit, you had more details than I did, uh, they sang for.
About two hours.
About two hours, yep. And, um, I've, I've heard some great things and they were invited back for next year, so I just wanted to highlight that and thank them for doing that and Mr. Reynolds for coordinating that.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, he's, um, he just has such a great job, that choir is amazing, I, I'm sorry, I just had to throw that out there. I mean, he's, he does a great job, those kids.
Anything else from other board members, other board reports? Not, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have a motion to adjourn? Any discussion, all votes are paper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any saints, motion passes?